It's February 13th, 9:00 AM. I'd like to call the order of the Saline County Board of Commissioners.
Commissioners, would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick.
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Here.
Commissioner Sparks.
Here.
Commissioner Wees.
Here.
Commissioner Hay.
Here. If you please, if you're able to, please stand, join me in a flag salute followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, that takes us to the portion of our meeting, the public forum. Is there anybody who would like to speak on government issues or anything on the government that is not listed on the agenda? You have three minutes. Does anybody like to speak? Okay. Those who are not seeing that will move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is comprised of approval of the tax rule adjustments, approval of accounts payable, approval of public forum agenda, approval of payroll, approval of county commission minutes for January 23rd, the approval of an addendum for the ARPA agreement with Kansas State University, prescription benefits amendment to administrative services agreement, approval of government affairs sub-agreement with the Slyna Chamber of Commerce, and approval of the lowest quote for RFD-7 station generator. Is there anything on the agenda that the commissioners would like to pull or any questions on?
I move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion for approval and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, that passes 5-0. So that will move us into the action items.
2024 Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month Proclamation with Aries Durand from D-VAC Program Manager. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month Proclamation, February 2024. Whereas one in three adolescents in the United States is a victim of physical, emotional, and verbal abuse from a dating partner, a figure far exceeds victimization rates for other types of violence affecting youth and whereas one in 10 high school students have been purposely hit, slapped, physically or emotionally abused by dating partner, and whereas a high school student who experienced physical abuse, physical violence in dating relationships are most likely to use drugs and alcohol, are greater risk of suicide, and are much likely to carry patterns of abuse into future relationships. And whereas young people are victimized by dating partners are more likely to engage in risky sexual behavior and unhealthy dieting behaviors, and the experience may disrupt normal development for self-esteem and body image. Excuse me. Whereas nearly half of teens who experience teen dating violence reports that incidents of abuse took place in a school building or on school grounds. And whereas only 33% of teens who were in abusive relationship ever tell anyone about the abuse. And 81% of parents surveyed either believe teen dating violence is not an issue or they admit they don't know if it's one. And whereas by providing young people, parents, and professionals with education about healthy relationships, warning signs of abuse, and relationship skills, and by changing attitudes that support violence, we recognize that teen dating violence can be prevented and whereas the Domestic Violence Association of Central Kansas needs all of Saline County to work towards ending teen dating violence by empowering young people to develop healthier relationships, assisting victims, and assessing the information and supportive services they need, creating better and more resources for young people in need, instituting effective intervention and prevention policies in schools, and engaging in discussion with family members and peers to promote awareness and prevention of the quiet epidemic of teen dating violence. Now, therefore, the Saline County Board of Commissioners hereby designate February 2024 as Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month and urges citizens to recognize and assist all those who serve in the rights and needs of victims of teen dating violence.
Thank you. So do you have any activities planned for the week or the month?
Yeah, so last week was actually Respect Week, and on our social media, we shared a lot of, you know, information about teen dating violence. Our campus advocate, Carly, who's at K-State in Kansas Westland, she has a bunch of, you know, activities for the kiddos to engage in, and so they are more aware of teen dating violence.
Okay, great. If you'd like to step forward, I'll give you a copy of the proclamation.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Saline County Commission proclaim February 2024 as Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month.
Second motion.
Okay, we have a motion as second. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, that passes 5-0. Now I'll give you your pro- Thank you. Okay, that brings us to number two on the action items.
Trademarking county logos with Melissa McCoy, County Public Information Officer.
Good morning. In February 2022, the Commission approved a new Saline County logo and its associated branding standards. Since then, the Saline County Health Department, the Expo Center, and most recently, the Department of Senior Services, has adopted logos that adhere to those standards. With these new modern logos in place, the next step is to trademark them. Trademarking the updated logos protects our brand identity, it ensures exclusive usage rights, and prevents unauthorized and inappropriate use. Trademarking also prohibits political candidates from utilizing the logo to suggest endorsement by county personnel or elected officials. It prevents businesses from using our logo to imply the county's endorsement of their products or services, and it prevents other Saline counties in the many adjacent states that have Saline counties from using the same logo. The county attorney was contacted on January 29th and agreed that a direct contract is acceptable for this project. Being that trademark law is a highly specialized and professional service, staff would like to contract directly with Thompson Law in Salina. The total cost is not expected to exceed $11,000. The Saline County logo will be $2,500. The Department of Senior Services, Health Department, and Expo Center logos will each be $1,250. These costs represent attorney fees as well as the government filing fee of $350 per class of goods and services. The Health Department, Department of Senior Services, and Expo Center are expected to be registered under two classes of goods and services, while the county logo is expected to be registered under four classes of goods and services. We will likely incur costs during the process depending on the issues raised by the examining attorney. So we're budgeting an additional $1,000 per application to get through that examination process. These funds will be paid from the legal fees line item of the general courthouse budget, and there's more than sufficient funding to cover this expense. Alternative for action include: authorize staff to proceed with the trademark process on all four logos; authorize staff to proceed with the trademark process on one or more, but not all the logos; or do not authorize staff to proceed with the trademark process and provide further direction. Staff recommends the Commission approve the trademark of all four logos.
Okay. Melissa, is there any other departments or anything that's need to submit or would submit a logo?
So, we have included all of the departments that went through the rebranding process to get the new logos, except for Emergency Management. Emergency Management did also create a new logo. However, because it is so similar to many other Emergency Management logos, it is very, very likely not eligible to be trademarked. So, we did take a look at all the departments that have logos and look and see what was original enough, what was in public use enough, to be, to go through the trademark process, and those were the four that we identified.
Okay. Any other questions from the Commission?
Does, does the Saline County, the general logo appear on all of the trademark, you know, the headings and so forth? Or does each department, I mean, like the Department of Senior Services, their logo has strictly their logo on it and not the Saline County logo?
Correct. A lot of departments are using both logos. You know, we'll have the Saline County logo on one side and the department logo on the other, but it's really department-dependent.
Well, it seems to me like the Saline County logo should be prevalent on everyone's stationery.
Melissa, was, was the old logo that the Saline County used, was it trademarked?
I don't believe so.
Was there ever an issue?
There was not an issue in our community. There have been issues in area communities, in neighboring communities, with their county logos being used. So this is really a preventative measure that we are taking.
I, I get why we're doing it, I guess, but it sure seems like we could make better use of $10,000 or more.
Right, and $11,000 is the max that we, we should incur because of that examination process. We're budgeting extra money.
Was this, was this brought up by the county attorney to have it done, or whose idea was it to have it trademarked?
Do you want to answer my question?
It was actually mine. And that's based on some feedback. Melissa referenced the fact that there've been some incidents that occurred in neighboring community. And so, when I became aware of that, I said, "We should look into this and see." And so I talked to Mr. Montoya, and this was the path that he recommended, so.
So neighboring community, do you mean in Kansas?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Any comment from the public?
Northern Mano Slana, go see what DSNO did with this issue. Changing the logo on the side of their trucks.
Okay, any other comment? Okay, I'll bring it back to the Commission for Action.
I move we approve RFA 2024-28 as presented.
Second motion.
Okay, we have a motion as second to approve the RFA. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That passes 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, it brings us to number three.
Bid award for 2024 pipe culverts with Wayne Scritsfield with Assistant County Engineer.
Good morning, Commission.
Good morning.
So I'm here to discuss and take action on the Saline County Road and Bridge Department's request to award the 2024 pipe culverts. Sealed bids were opened on February 1st at 11:00 AM. Three bids were received. The bid was set up to allow the awarding of all the individual items separately, and you can see the attached bid summary for those bids. All purchased material will be placed in the inventory used as needed. Alternates for action, accept bids as indicated by staff recommendation, reject the bids. The staff recommendation is to accept a bid from Wellborn Sales for the pipe culverts and dimple bands in the amount of $99,129.53. Staff also recommends accepting the bid from J&amp;J Drainage Products for the galvanized pipe end sections in the amount of $53,100. For a total combined bid of $152,229.53. The budget impact, staff recommends that these funds to purchase the pipe and end sections, we are not purchasing bridge decking, that's a misprint, be taken from the 125 account, the 2-mill account. This account has an unencumbered balance of $1,324,828.66. Any questions?
Wayne, I drove through the yard out there yesterday, not necessarily in anticipating this, just happened to be out there some other business and drove back through there. We have huge amounts of pipe culverts on the ground. This bid that's here, do we have projects that those are spoken for? Or why, why do we need more? I mean, I would guess there were over, well over 100, 100 and some units out there already.
Yeah, so different sizes, I know. Yeah, so we asked about that, and so in the bid, the majority of those pipes that we're bidding this year are entrance-sized pipes, and actually ran out of all of those last year and had to reorder. So this is to replace what they used last year. So they replaced about, are they, the majority of them to replace last year. So they installed about 89 culverts last year. So, their hopes would also be that if the weather is right and they have the capacity, they could use a lot of those pipes to replace crossroad pipes out there.
So in other words, you're saying field entries or driveway entries and that type of thing, which are the smaller sized?
Correct.
In the most, for the most part? And those weren't out there. I mean, I didn't take out a tape measure and measure, you know, what's there, so.
Yeah, that's our understanding. And, and the way that they go about ordering pipe is they have a, they just have a spreadsheet with a minimum and maximum that they want to have in inventory, and that's based on historical usage, and that's how they order, put in their order for the pipe.
Thank you.
Wayne, was there an engineering estimate of what to expect? Or how does this historically look to cost in the past?
Oh, so, yeah, good question. So the pipe from last year, the pipe on average is about 8% down from cost last year, per pipe. And the dimple bands are down about 5% from last year, and the end sections are up about 10% on average from last year. And last year was higher than the years before because COVID stuff and steel, steel shortages.
If, if we were to go about this in a different way, historically throughout the year, and order as we need, as needed, I mean, is this typically something that maybe we would have to wait for the, the mill to produce? Or it's not on the ground with the suppliers?
Right, typically there's a lag time, and we see that when we have people come and ask to get entrance permits, and we require them to provide the pipe for, for a first entrance that's going in. They usually have a few weeks of lag time that they have to wait for those pipes to show up. And we're worried about shipping cost also. We think we get a break by having large numbers shipped in at once.
Don't misunderstand me, I'm not, I'm not against this. I'm just trying to, you know, think about some alternatives that might perhaps be a better way of going about it. But I understand that when you need a culvert, you need it. And to wait 30 or 60 days on it might not be the best plan.
Wayne, does the county ever sell to an individual who's in new construction wanting to get an entrance, and they're being held up and cannot find product?
No, I think there's statute that we can't do that, if I remember right. Is that right? Yeah.
Wayne, just a quick question. I mean, there's quite a few 18-inch culverts, and there's quite a few 21-inch. Are most of all those just entrance into fields? And that three inches of difference that makes a huge?
It's not a huge difference, but it, we, we run calculations to determine what that size is, and, and yeah, that'll, that'll show up in the calculations.
Wow, okay, thank you.
We try and put in the biggest one we can fit in the road ditch. But a lot of times, it's just 18's all we can get in there.
Gotcha.
Yep.
Any other questions? Any questions from the public? Okay. I'll bring it back to Commission for Action.
Mr. Chairman, I approve that we approve RFA 2024-22 as presented.
Second.
We have a motion as second to approve the 2024-22. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. That passes 5-0.
Thank you.
Okay, brings us to number four.
Bid award for traffic paint and beads with Wayne Scritsfield, Assistant County Engineer.
Welcome back, Wayne.
Yes, hello, good. So I'm here to discuss and take appropriate action for the Saline County Road and Bridge Department request to award the bid for waterborne paint, latex, traffic line paint, and reflective glass traffic beads. Sealed bids were opened on February 8th at 11:00 AM. Four bids were received for the paint, and six bids were received for the glass traffic beads. You can see the attached tabulation of bids for that. Saline County has 175 miles of asphalt-surfaced roads. The bid includes 2,750 gallons of yellow paint, which will repaint the center line of all of our roads. The bid also includes 6,250 gallons of white paint. This volume will cover approximately 75% of the roads. So the edge lines don't get as much wear as center, so we don't need to recover those every time. Alternates for action, acceptable, accept the bids as indicated by staff recommendation or reject the bids. Staff recommendation is for the yellow and white traffic paint, staff recommends accepting the lowest bid without a contingency from Diamond Vogel Incorporated for $11.09 per gallon, that's down 7.2% from 2023, on the yellow paint, and $11.79 per gallon, down 1.7% from '23 on the white paint. The Sherwin-Williams Company turned in a lower bid by $685, but adds a contingency of an unspecified amount to pick up the used totes, if not clean, to their specifications. For reflective glass traffic beads, staff recommends accepting the low bid from McConnell and Associates for $0.46 per pound, that's up 2.7% from 2023 on the glass beads. For combined materials of $138,225, staff recommends that the funds to purchase the paint and glass beads be taken from the budgeted account, 1130-912273, glass bead, or paint and beads. The budget item has a current balance of $125,000. The total project materials exceeds the budgeted line item by $13,225. However, the Road and Bridge Department feels that the pavement striping is critical to the safety of Saline County road system. Therefore, we request $13,225 of the remaining cost to be taken from the 127 account, the Special Highway Improvement Fund. This fund has a current balance of $2,034,858.54. Are there any questions?
So Wayne, the $13,000, that's telling me either we have nothing on hand or nothing right now of any of this?
Well, for the paint, we can't carry it over, so, yeah, we don't have any paint left. We tend to carry over a little bit of beads, but not, not very much.
Okay.
Well, I'm not one for exceeding a budget line item, but I also know that several years ago, the National Transportation Safety Board passed certain laws and, and, and standards, and painting is one of them. And as someone who is eyesight failing a little bit in the, in the evening time, these white lines and yellow lines are extremely helpful and necessary. So hopefully next year, we can budget line item this just a little bit better or whatever, but thankfully, we've got a lot of money in the other account to take care of it. So I am in favor of this project.
If I may, and then, oh, sorry.
Go, please go.
If I may, in the last year, the Federal Highway Administration also enacted another requirement on the reflectivity of the line painting that ups that requirement, so we're trying to keep in meeting with that.
Just being inquisitive, why would pigmented the yellow paint be more expensive than a white paint?
No idea. Not sure. It probably has something to do with the pigment, yeah. Ingredients of the pigment.
And Wayne, I, I should know this, but on the 175 miles, does that also, in that asphalt deal, does that include the chip and seal roads also?
Yes.
Okay. That being said, it's like, one of my questions is that with a whole lot of chip and seal roads out of this 175, there's a whole lot of that that we painted, but now you can't even see the white lines and stuffs. Do, do we go back and redo those?
Yes.
At a different time? Okay.
Yeah, the next year, we'll, we'll paint them again.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. I mean, because that, I mean, where we talk about the critical to the safe county road systems, I'm thinking, if they can't be seen, then are we still placing the wider strips now? So why, why are we wasting, I mean, why are we utilizing the funds and the beads to put a wider line when they're not even able to be seen right now?
Well, um, yeah, I, we're, we're just trying, yeah.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah.
But I just wanted to ask that question. Thanks.
Any more questions? Any comment from the public? Okay, I'll bring it back to Commission for Action.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve RFA 2024-29 as presented. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve RFA 2024-29. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. That passes 5-0.
Thank you.
Take, thank you. That moves us to number- That moves us to number five.
Road and Bridge Request to Purchase Half-Tanker Drainage Structures with Justin Mater, County Engineer.
Good morning, Justin.
Good morning, Commissioners. So you're getting a heavy dose of the engineering department this morning, so. So I'm, I'm here this morning to request permission to purchase three half tanker drainage structures from the railroad yard. I know your request for action has two structures in there, and, and both of those structures were going to be a 30-foot-long structure that we purchase and put in our inventory. However, last Friday, we found another location on Sunnyside Road where another half tanker structure, you know, would be pertinent, and, except for this, at this side, a 40-foot-long drainage structure is, would be really required so as not to reduce the roadway and the ditches that, that are out there, so it needs a little bit longer. And so that's why I'm, I'm here today going from, you know, asking from two up to three. So we do currently have a, a half tanker structure in our inventory, however, that one does finally have a home. The maintenance department's going to install that on Crawford, Crawford Street just east of Donmire, so that'll be used up. So we're gonna, you know, I'm requesting for a 40-foot long, that's going to go on Sunnyside, and then two 30-foot long structures to go into our inventory, you know, ready for some kind of future, future use. You know, so these structures consist of a 10-foot diameter tank cut in half, and it's still plate welded to the bottom. You should have pictures in your packet of, of kind of what they look like. These types of structures do come from a single-source supplier, the railroad yard. You know, they're, they're down in Oklahoma, and they've, we've been really happy with the performance and, and ease of installation of these structures. So I said before, the, the maintenance division will install these structures for a total cost of around $20,000 to $25,000 per location, and if you, and if we would hire a contractor to put a reinforced concrete box, something very similar in size, it was gonna, it would cost around probably $80,000 for that, so. Alternatives for action would be to purchase three half tankers from the railroad yard, two 30-foot long and one 40-foot long. Another alternative would be to just purchase the 40-foot long, and therefore, we would not have any of these structures in our inventory. Another alternative would be to, you know, purchase the 40-foot and then one or two of the inventory structures, or to not purchase any of these structures and direct staff to the wishes of the board. Staff recommends purchasing three half tankers, you know, two 30-foot and one 40-foot from the railroad yard for, for a total cost of $43,180, and that cost does include the, the shipping cost to bring it to our yard. We also recommend that funds to purchase these structures be taken out of our special bridge 125 account or 2 mill, and it has a current balance of a little over $1.3 million. Questions?
What are lead time on these?
Um, they're usually pretty good. Recently, I know they've had problems with just trucking and, and getting drivers, but usually, we can get them in a couple of weeks.
Cause that's the reason I asked them at the lead time, do, I mean, do we actually need two for inventory? I mean, be sitting there, or?
We don't need two. I mean, I said, we don't need any, but it sure is nice, cause it's, when staff is, is, when the maintenance staff is installing these, you know, usually, they'll have a window, you know, they can go get these in, you know, and so it's nice to have something in stock that they can grab and, and go out to the field and install, so.
And what's the single price on the 40-foot one?
Uh, $17,000.
Justin, what did I miss in the translation here? Your, your recommendation on the sheet says $26,000, but I heard you say $43,000.
That's the $26,180, cause that was, cause that, when I put this request for action together, I was just asking for two. And then last Friday, we come up with another site, and so I'm asking for another 40, so it's that $26,000 plus $17,000.
So we're, we're buying three half tankers?
Correct. That's what my request is, to buy three.
Well, your, your picture shows volumes to me, and, and I think I've asked you this question a few weeks ago in our meeting, but if, if we use these instead of the normal culverts, I mean, we're saving 50 percent or more on a, depending on the size of the project, I understand, but.
Right.
I mean, the $13,000, one of these is, is it probably a $40,000 task to go the other way around, something like that?
Well, so that, yeah, it's the $13,000, you know, for the 30-footer.
Right.
But once you install it, and you, you know, we're trying to capture all of our costs, you're looking at $20,000, $25,000 versus 80. If you put in like a, a 10 by 3 reinforced concrete box, that's gonna, that's gonna run you around 80.
Well, these make all the sense in the world to me, so.
Couple of questions, because I'm still inquisitive.
Sure.
Prices in the past, how does this relate? Is it?
These are actually a little bit cheaper than last year's.
Okay.
The last years, the, the 30-footers were around 17,000, you know, so they, they dropped several.
And second question, lifespan of these?
You know, we're, you're looking at, you know, half-inch steel, you know, so there's, there's no, and it's not in, you know, we're not putting these structures where they're going to be exposed to salt, so there's no reason that they shouldn't last more than 50 years.
Are, are they coated at all?
No. They're coated with whatever material that the original railroad tanker was coated with, but they, we, we don't go back and, and recoat them with anything. You know, have them painted, you know, the, the railroad yard, the, the manufacturer, I don't, they don't, they don't do that type of operations, they'd have to send them out and, to get coated or painted or, you know, with something, some kind of coating, and then ship them to us, and so that would, i-if we did require that, that would probably bump up the cost significantly.
Sure. And you said that the, the material is half-inch plate, half-inch steel. What are the end plates, or is it half-inch also?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, uh.
They're not.
I'm not sure about the end plates.
I, I was out there yesterday and looking, and just, just, as, I used to sell steel, so I, those kind of things catch my eye. It's probably more like 3/8 or quarter inch as opposed to half, so the, it's just a, no big deal to me.
Okay, any more questions? Any comment from the public?
If we're having trouble getting drivers and trucks to get it, does the county have a tractor and a float that could go get it themselves? We could get it when we need it? If you got a 40-foot float, you can bring it home yourself, save the transportation cost.
Okay, any more questions? Okay, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Please go ahead. Have a. Mr. Chairman, I move we approve RFA 2024-25 as presented.
Uh, I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and second to approve RFA 2024-25. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. It passes 5-0.
Thank you.
I just have a quick question now, but since we passed it, but does that, does that include the two plus the one, the three, because this only says two?
Yeah, but that's how it was presented.
I know, that's how it was presented, okay. I just, gotcha, thank you.
Okay, that brings us to number six.
Proposed road vacation for Matson Road with Justin Mater, County Engineer.
Good morning, Commissioners, again. So I've got a PowerPoint presentation, you know, with, with a few slides, but I'm, I'm here to talk about a road vacation request of Matson Road and Farley Road. So Todd Rhodberg filed an application to vacate a portion of Matson Road and Farley Road. This road vacation request is a result of the conditional use permit for a new sand pit for American Sand and Gravel, and let's see if this will work. Can we go to the next slide? I'm probably doing it wrong. Okay, here we go. So here's, we've got Matson Road. Looks like I got, I've had too much coffee this morning, pretty shaky. Matson Road here down to the south, and here we have Farley Road, here's Holmes Road, and, and the conditional use permit for the new sand pit is right there in the, in the green. And so that's, that's what this request is really stemming from, you know, and that, that conditional use permit was approved for last year. Let's go to the next slide, here we go. Okay, Harbin Farms currently owns both sides of Matson Road. Gary Harbin is in favor of this vacation, cause he intends to install a pivot irrigation system which will overlap the existing right-of-way. And so, you know, so here's Matson Road. Harbin Farms, you know, owns both sides of that, and so the, see, the red was highlighted in red there, that is the vacation that is, we're, we're currently talking about, and so Gary Harbin wants to put in a pivot irrigation that'll just overlap, will cross over that existing right-of-way. So currently, TNR Construction is building an access road to their new sand pit location, and once that access, or once that construction is complete, they'll have to have an access agreement between American Sand and Harbin Farms, and that'll have to be filed with the Register of Deeds. And this is just a, the yellow dash line right there is just the general location of kind of where, where they're, where they're building that access road, so, you know, because it's vacation wood, landlock, you know, the, the, the parcel where the pit's going to be, and so that's why you have to have that access road there. Sling County Road and Bridge is in favor of this vacation request. However, there is an AT&amp;T phone line that's currently utilizing that existing right-of-way, so the vacation must provide access, you know, to, to those facilities. Let me see, okay, so here is just a, you know, county map and kind of with the general location of where the project's at, so if you go on, you know, Old 81 South out of town, then you turn on Minter Road, and then you go through Minter, and the chronic, you cross the, the river there, and then Matson Road is, it's a dead-end road that goes to the north up in there, so that'll just kind of give you some idea of where the project's at. Oh, thank you for zooming in. All right, next slide. So here's some pictures of the project site, so the picture on the left is at the very north end of Matson Road, looking south, so we're, so I'm fairly close to the, the river, looking south, and so there's some, a tree line there on the east side of the road. And then the picture on the right side, that is the south end of the vacation request, and so really, you know, there's some houses along Matson Road, so I'm just kind of at the north end of that property, looking north. And so the roadway in that picture on the, to the right, where it's got some, some vegetation going down the middle, that's the existing Matson right-of-way, and, and really, that road really just provides access to the, to the farm fields on both sides of it. And then the road to the left of that picture is a new access that American Sand and Gravel is constructing to, to go to their sand pit. So here is, again, I am on the south end of the vacation request, or towards the north end of the houses, and here, we're looking south, so I'm just turned around from that last picture and took a picture south, and so this is the, call it the end of the project, so as part of the, the conditional use, we're requiring American Sand and Gravel to upgrade Matson Road from this point south to Minter Road. The, the plans have been approved for that improvement, so my office approved those plans, and so now, American Sand and Gravel is in the process of purchasing right-of-way and, and moving some utilities. And I think, okay, so, and this is just the title sheet kind of of those plans. So the, kind of the process for this, I, I mentioned this in the, the request for action, so if, if I'm given permission or approval to move forward with this vacation, the next step is to publish a notice of hearing for vacation of road in the Sling County Paper Record. The publisher's affidavit will also be sent out via certified mail to the petitioner, adjacent landowners, and affected utility companies. Then a public hearing will be held where we will approve the resolution for the right-of-way vacation, and then that resolution will be filed as, filed with the Register of Deeds. Alternatives for action would be to proceed with the right-of-way vacation as requested, deny the request for right-of-way vacation, or to approve a modification to the request. Staff recommends to proceed with the right-of-way, right-of-way vacation as requested. Cost of legal publication and certified mailing some notices to the landowners is approximated at $550, and I've, and I've talked with the clerk's office, and, you know, that's, that's, you know, that's an estimate. It might be a little bit high, but that should capture, capture all of our costs. So with that, there's any questions?
Justin, I sat in this, on this meeting with the, with the planning commission when they had that, did we have, how much pushback did we have from the public on vacating, I mean, not actually vacating, but the, the way this road was going in?
Um, I don't believe, if I remember right, I don't believe there was much pushback. There was lots of discussion on, you know, whether, you know, we wanted to have the, you know, all the overburden, cause that's really the issue here, is the overburden is going to be coming out of that location, all of the sand that they're going to be producing is going to be pumped under the river to their current location, which is on the other side of the river. You know, so it, it was a lot of talk about, you know, do we upgrade Matson or Farley? But as far as the public, I don't, I don't really remember there being much pushback.
Okay.
Well, I just want to make a comment, is that I went out yesterday and looked at this, and this, this Matson Road, I mean, it's, yeah, that's all it is, is a pasture drive down there, but that East Farley Road, I mean, that's been vacated for probably over 60 years. I mean, I don't, there's not even a road there.
Correct.
But one of my concerns is, is both of those houses there said that they have not been contacted by the county or anything, they didn't know this was even happening. They didn't know what was really going on here. So that's, that, I'm just saying, they, neither one of them really understood much about it. One of my other concerns, and I just want to ask, the road that the TNR is putting in there from that, that gravel down to the end here, is that, does the county require them any specifications, how that road should be built, or anything like that?
You know, that's really more of a driveway, you know, and it's, it's not going to have any residents, you know, for like a development, you know, if there was a development going in, there was, there would definitely be some, some requirements, you know, for that, but however, right now, I, I wasn't planning on, you know, or in a special use or any of that, is there's no requirements that that road must be built to. However, it's going to be built to, because they're going to be running trucks up and down that, and so it's, it's got to be built to a standard that can handle those trucks. You know, so, but moving south.
Yes.
Where it's still the, where we're upgrading Matson Road, yes, we've, we've talked about those standards and, and what that needs to be built to.
Because one of my other concerns is that since in just in the last year or two years, where we've had to buy right-of-way around some of the, the river on different locations to move the road out around it, and there's a couple areas on this road that we can't leave the road where it's at if those trucks are going to be going.
Correct.
I mean, so, is TNR, is it up to the sand company to buy those right-of-ways to move this road, or?
Yes.
And to upgrade this whole road? They're going to pay for this?
Yes, I'm gonna, I made this late last night. And I, and I didn't have a good picture or a good aerial to go off of, because of the plans, it's, it's hard to really see the, the overview of the project from the construction plans, but here, the, the yellow line is about where the new alignment's going to be for the, the road improvement project, and so there is a point where, where we have to stay on the existing alignment, where the, the, I guess, let me back up. Starting from the south end on Minter Road, the new alignment of that road is gonna, the center line of the new alignment is going to be pretty close to the west edge of the existing road, cause there's that tree line that follows all along through there, and I wanted to move the road along to the, to the west, so we don't have to pack that tree line. Cause another thing that I'm trying to do with this is to impact the residents as little as possible who live along through there, and so if we tear all those trees out, there's that house just to the east of the road, you know, that would be impacted quite a bit, so I want to leave those trees, we're going to move the road to the, to the west, and there's, therefore, there's going to be some new right-of-way along that west side. So that's really going from Minter Road to where we start to get to the river. Through the river right there, we, it's kind of a pinch point, we have to leave the center of the new road pretty close to where the, the original alignment is, and there's a crossroad pipe in that area, and so we're, we're kind of staying about where that alignment is. And then as we go north, we, we do get off the road quite a ways, you know, trying to straighten that out a little bit, provide significantly better sight distance, you know, going around through the river until we tie back in to where the houses are at. you know, going around through the river until we tie back in to where the houses are at. But then again, I don't want to impact those houses with a ditch and, you know, new grading. And so we're moving the road to the east there in front of those houses to try to minimize the impact that we're going to have to their front yards.
Thank you, because it's like, that was one of their issues. And once I started talking to them a little bit, it's about because the way it floods, this is all floodplain and where that water comes up into there, it just,
Right.
I think if we, but that was my, their worries is about how do we handle this water coming off of here? This, but I didn't know this road was going to be changed like this. That was my, one of their questions, and I didn't know how to answer that, but thank you.
Justin, I too went out and looked at this situation. And matter of fact, it's so remote and, and the roads appear to be non-traveled. I've had difficulty even finding it at first. The areas in red basically have been vacated already. That are, I have a little bit different picture that Darren provided me. But those areas, big deal, I mean, the way I see it.
Yeah, they're not, they're not really being utilized by the public.
My question in all of this, there's two questions, number one. But what's American Sand? I mean, what dog do they have in this hunt? If the road's vacated, I mean, why are they asking for more or less? Or what's their advantage to being involved in this?
I think their advantage of being it is, number one, they, if they're going to try to stay on the existing alignment, they're going to go all the way up to the river, you know, and then, so as you see here.
But that has nothing to do with us, that's going across private land. Why do we care?
So what, but what it does is that is still, once they, let's just say this road's improved and then they improve, you know, really build a road around to the sand pit. That's still on existing right of way that we would be responsible to maintain. And so what, for the advantage for us is that we no longer have to maintain a road that's utilized by trucks. You know, if it rains, you know, if it gets sloppy, that's their responsibility. But for them, they have more control over their road too, and that's what they want as well.
But these, if we're vacating the road, they're not going to be going on the road. That's why I'm saying, why do they care? Why do we, why are they involved in this? That's what I'm getting at. My other, and leave it at that. The other question is, the paperwork that I saw said all adjoining landowners have been contacted. According to Roger, they haven't. So what's going on?
No, what I said is that the two homes, houses right there at the south end of this, the north end of Mattson Road, they have not been contacted. The landowners right there, Harbin Farms, has been contacted. They're the boat, they're the owner of all the land.
Are they owner of the homes then too?
No.
Well, then the land, then the homeowners haven't been contacted.
Right, so with the special use permit, you know, there's a radius around that special use property that landowners are contacted with. And I do not know, I'm not involved with that, that part of that process. And so I don't really remember what that is. But I believe all of those homes were outside of that area. And so I'm not, I don't believe they were contacted for that. With the, this vacation request, those, so the next part is to send out letters to the adjacent landowners, which all of those houses are outside of the vacation. However, for me personally,
You've answered my question.
I would still like to contact them and so they know about it.
If they're outside of the vacation area, and that's a dead end road anyway, it's a moot point for me.
But it just, to come back to that issue, because I know that we, that same issue come up with the battery, back, battery backup plan on Simpson. I mean, it was that, that come up where it was outside of the, so many feet of that property. And there was only like one or two houses that even was enclosed. But it affected a whole lot of people around the mile or two that was on those roads. And, and that's why, I mean, what do, well, how do we get that where that, on a situation like this? How do we expand that to that, especially those corner, that house on the corner up there? That's going to impact them, and these two houses right there, that's going to impact them.
Right, that's a plan and zoning process.
I don't understand that, and why does, if the person lives down here and their house is here at this corner and that road down there is vacated, on a dead end road anyway, how does that impact them?
Well, Mr. Vindrickson, what happens here is when that sand pit starts down here, they've got to get rid of that dirt, that topsoil that's on there. They have to haul all of this top grinds out of there. They have to haul that out of there, lots of it. So they got to get rid of that. And so that's why they will have all this trucking going in and out of there for quite some time before they get down to a level where they can pump sand. And that's what this is being built for, is for that purpose right there, is to get rid of all the overage that they have to get rid of.
But the conditional use is already approved. I mean, that's, that's the impact. That's when they needed to be part of that process and show up to the planning and zoning meetings. You know, this year, the vacation, they're not going to be, the vacation itself, they're not going to be impacted. The new road construction, you know, I've tried to set this up to where they've got minimal impact, you know, in front of their, in front of their properties by moving the road over and not digging into the yard and not, you know, really trying to, to be careful of not removing a tree row. You know, but it's, it's, the vacation itself is, doesn't really impact them at all.
So the concern that Roger is speaking of has already been addressed by the Planning and Zoning Commission? Done deal then?
I don't want to prolong this anymore, but I do have a question. There, if I, if I'm hearing this right, what Roger's saying initially, there's going to be a lot of traffic heading south out of there on Mattson Road. And that's just prepping that for the sand pit. After that, will any product from that sand pit be moved south on Mattson Road? Or is it all going to be pumped?
It's supposed to be all pumped across the, the actual sand product is going to be pumped across the river to their current facility and then processed and sold out of there. Which, and therefore, it would go out to Waterwell Road.
Are there any guarantees that that's how it will be done? Or is there the possibility that?
That's all with that special, special use permit. And I'm not, I know, for that kind of language, I don't know about.
We're actually talking about two different things here then. Actually, the way I see it, we're talking about, we're supposed to be voting on the road vacation. And the concern is what's going to happen when those trucks are on there, which has already been approved by the planning and zoning, which is.
And we talked about it extensively during that whole process.
That's my point. And so we really don't have anything to say about that at this time, right? And is that correct?
As, that's from my perspective.
Well, how do we overrule this planning and zoning if indeed that's what we need to do? Which I don't think we do, I mean, they've already approved it, so.
Yeah, I'm mainly just here for the vacation. And that is really just your approval to move forward with the vacation is really where I'm at to inform you what's going on and to get your approval to move forward with it.
Well, I'm just getting an education.
Sure.
And, and for all this to happen, that vacation needs to take place. And that vacation is what we're visiting about.
Correct.
Okay, more questions from the, okay, any questions, any questions from the public? Okay, I'll bring it back to Commission for Action.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve RFA 2024-30.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve RFA 2024-30. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, all opposed, same sign, that passes 5-0. Oh, I did ask.
Thank you.
Thank you. That moves us to number seven.
Funding for Slade Airport Authority Overnight Flight Agreement with Philip Smith Haynes County Administrator.
Good morning, Mr. Chair members of the Commission. So as part of our American Rescue Act funding, we have been endeavoring to assist the Salina Airport in recovery from the airplane shortage, pilot shortage, all the things that happened as a result of the pandemic. And have gone through a number of iterations. Most recently, the Commission considered a request for $400,000 in funding from our ARPA fund to be matched with $400,000 from the City of Salina and $100,000 from the Airport Authority to provide a $900,000 incentive to SkyWest Airlines to induce them to change the flight times so that we would have an overnight flight here in Salina from Denver. The direction from the Commission was to go ahead and proceed with that. And so this is the agreement, which has been prepared by our ARPA consultants and reviewed by attorneys. And so I'm just bringing that back to you for final approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions. And I know that the Executive Director of the Airport Authority is in attendance and has some news regarding this as well, so.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you again for the opportunity to partner with Slade County on this economic development and, you know, recovery project. It is indeed recovering from pandemic pilot shortage and the rebuilding the air service for Salinas, Slade County, North Central Kansas. Happy to report that as of this weekend, the new Denver schedule is available for sale for flights, travel beginning on April 2nd of this year. So the anticipated overnight flight schedule is in place, again, available for sale today and has been since the weekend for travel beginning on April 2nd. The results are actually better than what we expected and indicated. So Denver alone, there'll be 163 unique city pair connections that are available. Then within that, there are maybe multiple flights to Phoenix just within the connect window, the four hour connect window at Denver. The schedule is departing Salina at 6:29 in the morning, arriving Denver at 7:05 in the morning. Then the return flight departs Denver at 9:05 local time, Denver time, arriving Salina 11:33. So Salina, Slade County, North Central Kansas passengers get to Denver to make available all the connecting flights, departing the large bank of flights United has at Denver in the morning, and then collect all the banks coming back in later that afternoon. And in the afternoon of the day, evening, we, all the flights are in. And then Slade passengers then collects all the passengers returning to Salina, non-stop flight. This has actually worked out even better than expected with a change in adjustments with the daily flight, non-stop flight to Chicago. Chicago will be 181 distinct and separate city pair connections. So with this new flight schedule that is effective now, 344 connections over Denver or Chicago, vastly improving the utility of air service and connectivity. The fares are really amazing too, in my opinion. But, you know, Denver fare still remains just very affordable, $90 one-way, $180 round trip. So that is fantastic. By looking at some of the connections this last night for travel, round trip, travel April 12th to April 14th, Phoenix was $447, the lowest fare available. Houston was $329, lowest fare available. Las Vegas, $370 round trip, lowest fare available. And I've got too many examples to go through here this morning, but it's pretty much the same. And for these connections in Denver, that means departing Salina at 6:30 in the morning, arriving Denver at 7:00 AM in the morning, Mountain Time. And then the connection is, enables Salina, Slade County, North Central Kansas travelers to connect with those other destinations and arrive at that destination on these major westbound destinations in between 9:30 AM or 11:00 AM. That means you really have a big bulk, a bulk part of the day. You're not sitting around waiting for the next connection or next flight. So a lot of utility in this new schedule as we expected, actually greater than we expected. Then the last bit of news to share with you, the Airport Authority's been given notice by the Federal Aviation Administration. And we've gone ahead with that notice to start design of a terminal building expansion so we can keep up with the passenger growth that will, that we anticipate will be coming with this new schedule. So with that, be glad to answer any questions that the Commissioners may have. And thank you for your support.
Okay, this schedule now that you just, this, these are all set now, I mean, they're.
The schedule is, is in place at united.com, is available for purchase today for travel beginning April 2nd. Okay.
Tim, originally I had told the Commission that I thought there were four, a little over 400 connections that were now available. The number that you said here this morning is more like 350 or so?
It'd be 344.
344.
Yeah, between Chicago, combination of Chicago and Denver together.
So I misinformed them then previously if that was, I don't know where I, I thought I got that number from one of the meetings.
Right, we were, we were still, until you see the schedule in place and filed, it's hard to see all those connections made until it's in place.
You were giving us the, really, the great scenario for Denver. What about Chicago? Do we, do we still meet their banks?
Yes, this new schedule is, makes the adjustment also to meet the significant banks to travel in and out of Chicago, yes.
And of course, one of the big questions that we have is there going to be an overnight repair? What do they call it, the repair?
Overnight maintenance, yes.
Maintenance, yes.
There will be though, and this enables us to continue to work with SkyWest Airlines to bring more aircraft in for overnight maintenance because they have an over, they'll have an, beginning on April 2nd, they'll have an overnight flight with the aircraft on the ground for overnight maintenance. And we can build off of that.
Is that done through One Vision then?
Yes, it is. One Vision does the other maintenance.
One Vision's already here, already has the mechanic, already have the people. All we need now is the airplanes.
Right.
Okay.
And, and SkyWest is already a One Vision customer. So it's not building a new, it's now an aircraft on ground for overnight maintenance. And One Vision has, has a third shift doing overnight maintenance for Mace Airlines already.
So momentum is building.
Yes, it is, thank you.
One quick question, if I might. There was some concern earlier from this Commission, or some on this Commission, that, that the agreement be tied into the longevity of the agreement with the FFA? And where it wouldn't be a one-year agreement. Can you expound on that?
The agreement, and I think that is attached in your, in your package, it does go ahead and tie into the, the, I got to find that real quick, but it does tie into the three-year. The written agreement between the Airport Authority and SkyWest Airlines ties into the three-year EAS agreement that SkyWest has now from the US DOT.
Thank you.
Okay, any more questions from the Commission? Any public comment? Okay, I'll bring it back to Commission for Action.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve RFA 2024-23 as presented.
Second the motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve RFA 2024-23 as presented. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries 5-0. Okay, that moves us into the informational items. Well, you're ready, Rosie, aren't you?
I'm here.
Senior Services Quarter Update with Rosie Walter, Senior Services Director.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
This quarterly update is for interval period October through December of 2023. First is the accomplishments. We did our annual Meals on Wheels gift bag. On December 15th, we received a United Way grant for $5,000 that helped us purchase everything, including dry goods, canned goods, different things for the seniors over Christmas. And we had nine different vendors that helped us out this year. Each vendor brought a dry good, non-perishable item like canned soup or Christmas candy, different things like that. And then we had the Silver Needles, they made pillowcases, Christmas pillowcases for all of our. we had the Silver Needles, they made pillowcases, Christmas pillowcases for all of our homebound seniors. Sheriff's Office, they came in again this year and they delivered all 260 bags to our homebound seniors, so. Great event. And I've got some pictures at the end of the slide, or the presentation. The Salina Theater Project, the last presentation that they did was Feeble Fables. It was October 27th and 28th. Both nights were sold out. They hold this over at the Salvation Army, and I know now that they're getting ready for their next production. So, we do have a new agency logo, as Melissa was stating, and I'll show you that at the end of the presentation. We've had several different evaluations or annual reviews of the center. The first one was the North Central Flint Hills Area Agency on Aging. They completed an evaluation and they rated the center exceptional, neat and clean and pleasant. Staff was exceptional, very helpful and friendly, and food was rated exceptional. The Kansas Department of Aging and Disability Services, they came in and they did a quality review on January 10th, and we've not received those results yet. The Dane Hansen Foundation, they have a magazine called the Northwest Kansas Today. They came in and they interviewed our theater director and myself, and they're going to do a publication in the winter 2024 issue, so that should be coming out here pretty quick. And the Kansas Department of Agriculture, they did a annual inspection on January 17th, and they did have one finding. There was no consumption date on one of our products, and we have since corrected that. The meals served for 2023, first I've listed the quarter, which is actually October through December, we served 29,354 meals between Meals on Wheels and the dining room, and then a total for the year is 116,265. Of that amount, 92% of that is subsidized, whether it be Meals on Wheels or congregate in-house meals. And I gave you a comparison from 2022 and then 2021. You'll see a modest growth of 1,159 from 2022, huge growth from 21 of 21,064 meals served. The upcoming plans, in March, March 21st, the Greater Salina Community Foundation is holding their Match Madness. We will participate in that. They, this is the event that allows all the nonprofits to go in, and they provide a half-match to every dollar that we're able to raise for our endowment funds. Currently, we have an RFP out on our food contract, and I'm looking for volunteers, if anybody's interested, to help with our review, the review committee, and help us select a new vendor for our food contract. Budget update. So, I've listed out every single quarter on the revenue and then the expenses. The first table is the revenue. So you'll see for October, we raised 109,369, and the total revenue for the year is 449,529. And expenses in the table below for the quarter was 111,23592, and total expenses for the year is 796,972 for 2023. So, taking the revenue minus the expenses, the total operating cost for the senior center is 347, 442, not including what was expended in donations. So, next column or table is the donations. So, we brought in 346,305 in donations, and we expended 263,828. So we have a carryover for the 2024 of 166,535. And we are currently doing our fundraiser right now, too. And I think we're right at 60,000 we've raised so far to add to that. Last is the grants and donations. These are our current grants that we have out right now. The PET program with the Greater Salina Community Foundation, 96178 is the balance as of the end of December. The Meals on Wheels America grant that we received, we have a balance of 5,99858. And then lastly, the Christmas project for United Way, 5,089 and 54. And of course, we've spent all that on the Christmas project. Okay, and I'm going to show you some slides of our logo and such. Okay, so this is our Meals on Wheels gift bags that we did for the Christmas that United Way helped fund. So this kind of gives you an ideal, and it doesn't show all the bags, but this is what a bag looks like. So each bag probably weighs about 40 pounds. It is stuffed full of soups and vegetables and canned meat products and candy and snacks and everything from Cheez-Its to Slim Jims, a little bit of everything. And then behind, you can kind of see some of the volunteers, the sheriff's office staff that came in and helped deliver. Thank you. Next slide, this is one of our vendors or volunteers that helps stuff the bags, and you can kind of see the tables behind her of all the different items that we walked around, and we had everything sorted by meat, vegetables, so that the person just walks around with a bag, picks up one item, moves to the next station, picks up the next item, and keep going. Meat station. Oh, can't quite see all this, but this is our new logo that we just had made, and I put beside it the county's logo, so you can kind of get an ideal of the branding and how they, they feed off of each other. And that's it. So if you have any questions, I'll take those.
Rosie, how do you determine who gets a Christmas bag? Is that whoever gets a Meals on Wheels?
Exactly. So, yeah.
Okay.
Again, Rosie, thank you for all you guys do over there. It's a, it's a great service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brings us to the next item.
Emergency Management Quarter One Update with Michelle Wise, Emergency Management Director.
Passing of the baton. I didn't prepare for like a stand-up intro, so. All right. So, this will be a little recap of '23, and then also some forward thinking for what we are doing in '24.
You're supposed to be talking.
On the bright side, it'll be 60 degrees today.
No weather emergency.
Yeah, right. Sweet. So, EOC training, this is something that we kind of discussed back in '23, but we'll start rolling out in '24. Some of you guys have been down in the basement of the police department to our EOC. One of the things that came up in one of our quarterly meetings, which our next one will take place on March 14th, is the fact that depending on certain incidences, certain room structures are preferred, and the structure and space that we have in the basement of the police department isn't ideal when we have a lot of connections that are going to be needed by key EOC staff. It is great for EOC briefings when you need to get 35 people in there updated within the next 15, 20 minutes, and then out of there. But if they're going to set up shop and actually work out of there, it's not ideal with just the internet connections and the outlet availability. So we are going to take our next quarterly update to the PD Training Center, and we're going to see if that classroom style setting is a little bit more feasible. It has also been discussed that it is closer if the city-county building was going to leave. I do know a lot of county departments are going out to road and bridge, and logistically, that's just a little bit closer if that was going to be needed. So, we're going to try that out. Tentatively, as of right now, I have four different emergency operations center locations within the county that are in the emergency operations plan. So, don't think that I'm against the basement of the police department, I just like options. One of the other things that we've been working on, and that I've spoke on in the past, is the regional homeland security projects. Coming up in '24, we are going to have a cyber investigations course. I'm actually very excited about this, not just because I was the poor soul that got stuck being the chair of this project, but because right now, when we have an internet investigations crime, we do rely heavily on KBI to investigate that, and there is a delay. By sending some of our own local North Central law enforcement individuals, hopefully we can get some of those crimes solved a little bit quicker and work just a little bit faster. One of the other things that I do have some pictures of, I believe in the next slide, is the tactical first aid class for citizens that the sheriff's office is rolling out. It's actually very fascinating. It's a three-hour hands-on course, and they'll teach you how to apply a tourniquet, but also some creative alternative ways to make a tourniquet if you need. We also will be getting Stop the Bleed kits for schools this year, as well as working on some ICE rescue training, and this includes the mounted patrol for the sheriff's office and Mitchell County's ICE rescue and dive team as well. So like I had mentioned, the tactical first aid class is a three-hour course. Right now, I believe the first course that they've taught in Salina was this past Saturday. They did teach quite a few churches and safety and security groups within the community. Hughes' goal is to roll out this to any private industry that is also interested. Taking this class, you will get an actual kit with a tourniquet, you will get to train on it, and then you get to take that home with you and obviously customize that the best that works for you if you wanted to add another tourniquet. But it is just a great stepping stool of getting those out into the community. Last week, we also did host Storm Fury on the plane. We did double our attendance. We are now up to 100 citizens that attended the two-hour weather presentation. This one was slightly different from those in the past, aside from just talking about basic weather patterns and what to know about severe weather. We also talked about safety, and if you were going to be a spotter, or if you do enjoy storm chasing, just how to make sure that you're doing that safely, not for, only for yourself, but also for the first responders that may be responding to those calls as well. I will say that at this rate, if we continue to double, I will have to find a new location. So hopefully Sam's Chapel at Kansas Wesleyan will be done by then if we look to anticipate 150 people next year. One of the other things that we will be attending is the incident support team symposium. Some of you may remember back in 19, we did have two individuals from adjacent counties that came and supported our emergency operations center during the flooding. In return, I do also participate and serve on that team, so if other counties need additional help or support in their emergency operations center, I can go and stand and assist them. It also gives me experience in someone else's disaster that is not our own. On that note, speaking of disasters, the state did inquire about damage assessments for the winter's weather that we had back in the beginning of January, and they are looking to see if we meet the new state threshold. I will say just with road and bridge, we were $28,000 short of meeting our new county threshold, which then we exceeded when we included just what the city of Salina had done for snow removal. So, we shall see if what the federal government's next steps is in that process. Exercises, we are going to be a little bit busy in the next quarter. We have the Glen Elder Dam Tabletop on March 26th. We are going to be doing a three-site full-scale exercise for a domestic terrorist attack in Saline County later this summer. We are partnering with the Air Force and the Army National Guard, and we will be doing a downed aircraft full-scale exercise on March 28th. We are doing a chemical and medical response and surge functional exercise for the hazmat team and healthcare providers within Saline County and the North Central Region. And then we will also be doing for the North Central Region, a winter storm and utility failures tabletop on March 20th. On March 6th, we will be going to the library, and we will be providing a basic weather presentation. This will be a recap of what we kind of covered in Storm Fury. We did get some outreach, and they did request if we could host Storm Fury twice in a year, but since we partner with the National Weather Service, we did kind of tweak that to make something available without impeding on the schedule of the National Weather Service. Some of the safety planning that we've already started to begin, having the River Festival planning for the IAP. We will have our first meeting for that in April. We will have our first planning meeting for the Crossroads Marathon, who, last time I checked, I think there are already over 2,000 runners that are signed up for November's race. We'll start planning for that later next week. And then we are actually, I was invited to meet with the city-county building safety committee to discuss a possible exercise for this building. A short recap of rural fire. The red is the fire calls, and the green are the med calls, and that one orange one in January of '24 is actually a technical rescue call that we had. As you can see, I'm not too upset about this. The majority of our calls for service for rural fire have been medically related and not necessarily burn-related. My hopes is that a lot of that is related to those changes that we made for burn regulations. Other than that, the fire districts are just working on the ARPA grant projects that you guys awarded them earlier this month. But that's all I have. Any questions?
Clarification, Michelle, if someone in rural Saline County, southwest, southeast, whatever, needs medical attention, is that ambulance that is dispatched to that comes from Salina Fire Department? Is that correct?
Yes. And they, depending on the rural fire district in which they fall, we do have first responders on rural fire districts that can respond ahead of that ambulance.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, number three.
Appraiser update with Sean Robertson, county appraiser.
Okay, good morning, commissioners. I won't read through everything that you have in your packet, but I did want to highlight some things. So, over the past six months since I was last in front of you, we have new job descriptions and duties in our office for over half of the people in our office. That is going well, and we'll be continuing to get all of that smoothed out. We reorganized and reduced our staff by one person because we have simply become more efficient with our processes and looking over what we could do differently. So, we were able to do that. Obviously, that in turn affects the budget. We ended 2023 $61,000 under budget. For 2024, we have a total budget increase of somewhere around three-quarters of 1%, simply by, again, being able to reduce the staff and just becoming more efficient with, with what we do. It is a tangible number that can show that that is working. We got our 2023 report from Department of Revenue Property Valuation Division, which oversees our operations, that we were in substantial compliance for 2023, maybe not quite a perfect score, but we were getting there. And then our 2024 mid-year is a perfect score so far. Now, that sounds a little funny that mid-year 2024, but our appraisal year basically runs June 1st to June 1st. So we're actually coming up on the end of our 2024 year for what we do. We will be mailing our real estate valuations. The plan is on February 28th, we're required to by March 1st. We have contracted once again this year with Copico here in town to do so. Two years ago, we weren't very happy with the company that we had doing it out of Iowa. We contacted Copico, who, to be frank, didn't know if they could handle that big a job. But they have done so very well at a reduced cost, and obviously, one perk of that is keeping it local, so they will be doing that again. And because we were the first ones to go with them, I know of at least half a dozen counties that have also contracted with them to mail notices. So, that's a good thing. So, that's a good thing. So, February 28, real estate valuations for '24 will go out. They will also be available on our website that day, which means the last day to call with an appeal request will be March 29. We are still finishing up our final valuations. Looks like the existing market is slowing somewhat, certainly not going down. But considering we've had in the last two years as big an increase, year over year, as there's ever been in history, the slowing was expected. However, that's the existing market, and obviously, as anyone can tell simply by driving around, that new construction is booming. So, with that, any questions, comments, or concerns?
Sean, with tongue-in-cheek, I would request that you run a seminar for other departments' heads. Maybe we could lower some costs county-wide.
Okay, noted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sean.
Budget process for 2025 with Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator.
So, speaking of costs, since we've had department heads here talking about the end of 2023, I want to start talking about 2025. It is, believe it or not, time to start pondering our budget for next year and the process that will lead us to getting a budget adopted in the middle of August this year for next January. So, this schedule that's laid out and attached to your agenda item this morning is pretty much the same as it's been for the past few years. The Chairman and I did have a conversation. He said he would be interested in making sure that the public has maybe some more meaningful opportunity to provide input. You know, typically, although there are lots of places where the public sees you all talk about the budget, it's a little hard for residents to maybe know where they could interject and have ideas. So, we talked about several different options and thought that an idea, if it works for the rest of the Commission, would be that when I present the draft expenditures to you on May 14, that we would do that with a little more context than we've done typically in the past, a little bit more comparison to prior years and that sort of thing. And that then, on the departmental presentations on the following Tuesday, we would certainly invite the public to, you know, either attend those or view that on TV or online. And then, we don't typically take public comment at those, but thought we could take some written questions from the public and then come back on May 28 and review responses to questions. So, that would be an opportunity for folks to sort of be in, kind of at the beginning of the process, and get their voice heard. So, with that, we try and do a little bit of a social media campaign to encourage that and so forth. But that is what I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions or take any feedback from the Commission about anything you like or dislike about the budget process.
Makes sense to me.
You know, one thing I would like to also see with the departments is, you know, I would like to, you know, try to challenge the departments. I like to see what their needs are. You know, all departments have wants. We all have wants. But I want to see what the needs are, and we take care of those needs before we jump in to, you know, a lot of the wants that they've got. Because I think we can cut a lot of things if we just jump to the meat and get the needs of the departments instead of some of the wants. We can always look at those wants, and there's always out there, and there's always time to address them. But I think during this time, I think the needs are the most important part of this budget. Anybody else? Okay.
County Administrator update with Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator.
So, just three items for today. First off, a little bit of a legislative update. I mentioned last Tuesday that Hannah was not here because she was in Topeka that day, and we got really great feedback from legislators on the presentation that the community did. Renee Duxler from the Chamber kind of took the lead in presenting to both of the Senate and House Commerce Committees, and that was really well-received. People think that Salina-Saline County is a model that other communities around the state should emulate. Couple bills of note. You may have heard or seen from KAC Senate Bill 373, which Senate Bill 373 would prohibit expenditure of public funds on lobbying the Legislature. And it would prohibit expenditure of public funds on membership in groups that lobby the Legislature. So, the obvious target of those are organizations like the League of Municipalities in KAC that, Association of School Boards, et cetera, that employ people to amplify the local government voice in Topeka. There, as with, sometimes happens with legislation, there are some unintended consequences of that. So, the Chamber lobbies. So, we would not be able to spend money on Chamber dues. We would not be, you know, if you think of the different things, we would not be able to spend money on membership in the Kansas Association of Local Health Departments. We would not be able to spend, you know, public funds on many of these organizational memberships that we get great value out of those organizations, completely aside from the fact that they also happen to lobby. So, that's an unintended consequence, I think, of what the legislation is trying to achieve. But it also, you know, the whole issue of spending public funds on lobbying is one of those things that people are like, well, but why would you need to do that? Like, that seems like a ridiculous expenditure for local government to lobby the state Legislature. Well, I've got a couple examples of why we need to do that because there are a couple of other bills currently working their way through, one of which is Senate Bill 468, which would prohibit any city or county that exceeds the revenue-neutral rate from providing any kind of tax incentive for economic development. So, we could not do the Rural Housing Incentive District that's generated the activities at Aeroplanes and Southview Estates. We could not provide incentives to keep Shwan's jobs here in town as opposed to going to South Dakota. We could not use those economic development tools if we or the city were to exceed the revenue-neutral rate. When the revenue-neutral rate was adopted, it was supposed to be a transparency measure. It was supposed to be an opportunity to provide the public with clear transparency about how much tax revenue local governments were raising. It was not intended to be a hammer on our economic development prospects. So, those are the kinds of things that the Legislature, somebody sort of cooks up. And if we did not have the ability to push back on that and explain to them why that had potentially negative consequences, there might be all sorts of interesting policies that would happen on an annual basis. There are also a series of public health bills, and two in particular, that would strip away the ability of both KDHE and then also local health departments to do quarantines. And I know people think about one particular disease that we've all experienced in the last few years, and people have different opinions about how that was handled. That's not the only disease that exists. Quarantine orders were started because of tuberculosis back in the late 1800s, early 1900s. So, stripping away something because you didn't like one particular outcome is another one of those things that the Legislature sometimes, you know, they get fixated on one particular problem and come up with a solution that generates, like I said, unintended consequences. So, a lot of activity going on in Topeka that has potential impacts for us. Fortunately, I believe they are taking tomorrow off to go to the parade in Kansas City. So, we'll have one day of relief. Moving on from legislative update, just two quick things. One, purchasing policy. We have been working on this for quite some time. So, I wanted to alert the Commission that that is finally coming in front of you next Tuesday. Staff has looked at it for a long time. So, I don't necessarily expect that you will like it the first time you see it, and that's okay. So, we'll introduce it next week. If the Commission has feedback, pushback, want to take some time to consider it, I think that's perfectly fine. It's a little bit different than, you know, a normal RFA. And then, last but not least, I just wanted to remind folks that next Monday is a county holiday. It's President's Day, and most county offices will be closed. So, that's all I had today.
Commissioners, comment?
I have a comment, and I want to preface my comment by saying that these are my feelings personally, my views, and not reflective of the other Commissioners. But I left this meeting last week feeling ashamed, feeling embarrassed with the fact that this group of Commissioners let a citizen attack one of our employees, questioning his integrity. I just couldn't believe that we let it happen. And for my part of that, I promise you, Mr. Philip Smith Haynes, that I apologize, number one, but I promise you, my time on this Commission, that won't happen again. I will speak up. You or any other employee that comes here and is verbally, personally attacked, that's a personnel situation. You want to attack the Commissioners, that's one thing, or the elected personnel. But I don't agree with allowing citizens to attack our employees. So, for that, I apologize.
Agreed.
I concur, and I appreciate you bringing that forward. There was some information that just wasn't correct, and people were being accused of.
I should have brought that up.
I was dumbfounded, and I should have spoken up, and I didn't. I apologize.
I apologize, too. I should have spoken up. As Chairman, I should have spoken up and stopped at where it is.
Right.
Thank you.
And we were at this point my first two years, and I don't want to ever see us backtrack to getting back there. One thing is, the Citizens Forum is not a press conference. It's not a time for them to ask questions on where we stand. It's a time for them to take less than three minutes to voice their concerns and their thoughts, and for us to listen to them. So, let's just make sure that it never gets back to the way it was eight years ago.
Well said.
Yeah, we put something in place this morning. I talked to the Administrator, and we're going to start the three-minute timer.
Well, the timing part of it isn't what I'm talking about. I'm talking about the personal attack.
Yeah, exactly.
I've got a couple short things. First of all, I attended the Health Department Advisory Council, my first one, that I've been involved with for years, on February 5. It mainly revolved around the final review and acceptance of the annual report, and I believe everybody was sent that. They put a lot of work into doing that, and that was very helpful. The one thing that I did notice, that the opioid task force update, and that was a kind of a goal of ours last year, is not progressing and has not really done anything. Jason had mentioned during that meeting that they need to refocus. And I at least spoke on behalf of myself, not necessarily the Commission, that that was still a priority for me. Second, County Administrator and I convened a housing task force meeting a couple weeks ago. There were 13 people in attendance. That was a broad goal of ours that we had, that we established, I think, a year ago. And very helpful, had great comments, started off a little slow, but then really started clicking. We had a, city staff was there that had gone through similar things with them, so that was helpful. The Mayor of Gypsum was there. And after an hour and a half of meetings, there's a couple things. And the whole broad question of this is, should this be put as a study session for us? Or Commissioner comments, or, am I saying that right, study session? Informational items or whatever? Is, are we interested in taking the next step? But number one, is that still a priority of ours? I mean, we made that last year, but that's pretty broad. You know, yeah, we need more housing. But talking to city staff and some, and our planning and Phillipa, the other thing is, that's just way too broad. I mean, it's, kind of the consensus at the end is, what is our Commission priority? Is it existing housing and rehab? Is it new housing? Do we help just the unincorporated parts of the, you know, those sorts of things? And the other thing is, I think that we really need to probably have a longer discussion, and not today, but, you know, longer discussion after you guys think about it, is it doesn't seem like this is going to happen without adding staff. And is that a worthy way to spend our money right now? I don't know. And it looked to me, what the city had done was not something that probably our current staff has the time to tackle. And also, we just need, if this is still a priority, I think that we need to have a discussion on narrowing the focus because there are pots of money out there. But the pots of money are for rehab or new or this, and just kind of a shotgun approach doesn't work. Anyway, give you guys some time to think about it. I think we talked about putting it on on a future agenda, and just kind of come up with some thoughts or concerns that you have before we do that. So, I thought it was well-spent time, no matter what. It was a nice meeting, but I think we need to look at narrowing our focus. That's it for me.
I just got one thing. I did want to make a, give a little bit of a report on the water situation at Sundowner. Representative Susan Kinkanen had met with the, some of the people out there. She had a meeting Tuesday with the Governor's Office and KDHE and some other people. I have not heard what happened there. I do want to relay, I want to thank the Granny Brigade for their, you know, getting that water, you know, water to those people. They were very, very appreciative of that and really said that at that time, it was something that, you know, they really needed. It's not over with. It's still in bad shape. But we're not going to let it lay. So, anyway, that's all I have on that.
I just want to visit a little bit about the ARPA money, and I had a meeting, and I don't-
I don't know if any of the other commissioners had a meeting with the United Way on their childcare. And that was just a really interesting and a meeting, you know, with them about how they've spent and some of the ARPA funds and moving forward with the childcare and what where they've accomplished. So I just wanted to comment on that a little bit. That was really interesting.
Okay.
Announcements?
So Jamie had one, but I guess now she doesn't since she's gone. She wanted to talk about voter registration?
Yes, so I will just let you guys know, voter registration will end February 20th. We are having late night voter registration Thursday from 5:00 to 7:00, and again on Monday and Tuesday from 5:00 to 7:00, I believe.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Got a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
You have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, that passes 5-0. Thank you.